It seems like we have everyone on here. Uh, I'm not sure if Steve on, I don't see him, but as I stated yesterday that he may or may not be on, uh, because he's a little bit under the weather, not feeling good. So evidently he's, he's still not feeling good. Let's continue to pray for him, uh, that he gets better, uh, expediently. And of course he won't be on the call this morning as we stated yesterday. But again, good morning to everyone. Uh, at this time I'd like to call the meeting to order. And also at this time, uh, I'd like to call on Reverend Griffith of Emmanuel Baptist Church to lead us with the invocation. And after that, uh, Vicki Carter Johnson will lead us with the pledge, which I'm hoping you all can see over my left shoulder. So with that, uh, Reverend Griffith.
Good morning, Mayor. It's always good to be with you. Appreciate the opportunity to, to be able to lead you in prayer. So let's do that. Let's just pray together. Heavenly Father, we, we bow before you today to give you thanks, to give you praise. Father, only you are worthy to receive our honor. Father, we know that scriptures tell us that you are omnipotent. There's nothing beyond you. There's nothing above you or below you. There's nothing you can't do. And, and so Father, you, you are the hope that we have in this world. And Lord, I pray that as we lean upon you for strength, Lord, that, that you would uphold, uh, your power in us, that, that we could overcome the things of the world that, that want to tear us down and drag us down. Father, your word says there's a time to tear down and a time to build up. And Lord, I pray that, that now in this country would be a time to build up. There's so much that's going on in our nation. There's so much, Father, that, that needs, uh, your attention and needs your people's attention. But Father, I'm, I'm reminded as so many times we are, that your word says that if your people, which are called by your name, should humble themselves and pray and seek your face and turn from their wicked ways, then we'll hear from heaven. And you will forgive our sins and you'll heal our land. Father, our land is in need of healing. So Lord, we just pray that your people would stand on your word, would stand for truth, not man's ideas of how to fix things. But God, your word, that, uh, we would stand on the truth of it. And so Lord, bless our country as we try to heal in so many different ways. Father, we, we pray that, that you would add your blessing to that. Lord, we, we pray for Steve. We pray that he does feel better as, as so many others that are ill and not feeling well. We just ask your hand to move across him. Father, your Holy Spirit to move across this nation to right, make your people rise up and, and be the people you've called them to be. Bless our government, bless, uh, bless our city government, Father, this council. As they seek to serve you in wisdom, this Lord, let them know what they need to do to bring peace and healing to our city. Lord, that, uh, that we would be the people you want us to be. So bless us today. Keep us under the palm of your hand and we'll give you praise for everything that you do, Father. We ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Reverend Griffith. You're, you're certainly welcome to stay on, but if you do not, it will not be held against you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for that prayer. At this time, I'd like to call on Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Vicki Johnson to lead us with the pledge. And I hope you all can see the flag over my left shoulder.
Thank you, Mayor. Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And which is stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just for all.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Johnson.
You're welcome.
We will proceed on. Next on the agenda is the presentation and some proclamation. And the first presentation is our employee service recognition. And I know, uh, people, uh, continue to get tired of me saying this, but I, I, I believe this whole heart. We can't say thank you enough to people, uh, when it's, it's done sincerely for people giving of themselves and for their services. So with that, I'd like to call on a city manager and Stephanie Chestnut.
Morning. Thank you, Mayor.
Good morning.
As you said, this is a highlight for us. We, um, often, uh, don't get to say thank you enough and people don't get to hear thank you enough. So this is our opportunity to do that. Uh, what we do is we recognize employees who had five-year incremental service anniversaries. So these were the anniversaries that we, um, observed for the month of February. We'll get started with our fire department. We have firefighter Jimmy Brooks, who reached his 15-year employment anniversary. So congratulations firefighter Brooks. Um, if you'd like to say a few words, I welcome you to do so.
I just thank you guys. Um, you know, God's blessed me to be here, me and my family, uh, and protecting us even through this, you know, uh, pandemic and we've lost, you know, family members and people that we know. So I thank God that, you know, blessed to be here. There's a blessing to certain community, uh, that I grew up in and the people that I know, you know, here. So, uh, just thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also with our fire department, we have Captain Christopher Wright, who, uh, also had his 15-year employment anniversary. So they went through fire college together, uh, I'm sure. So, um, Captain Wright, I see you on here. So congratulations. If you'd like to say a few words, I welcome you to do so.
Can, can you hear us?
Uh-oh, the audio isn't working.
We can't hear you. Mike, we can't hear.
May, let me see if I can fix it real quick.
Okay. He's on mute. Can, can you unmute it? Uh, Captain Wright? Can you hear us?
Yeah.
I apologize. I, I, I'm unable to fix it. I don't know what, why it's doing that.
Can, can you, Captain Wright? Hello? Well, can you hear us, Captain Wright? Well, listen, we cannot hear you. However, uh, it may rebound later on. And, and if there's an opportunity to give us a chance to let you say something where we can hear you. But in spite of that, we sincerely want to say thank you for what you've done. Your 15 years is a long time. You know that, uh, anytime you do something that long, there's some challenging times, but we appreciate your attitude for sticking in there. And we'd like to ask you to stick in there at least another 15 more years. I don't know whether you want to hear that or not. But we certainly want to say thank you so much for what you've done. We certainly appreciate.
Thank you.
Oh, we can hear you now. Uh-oh.
Oh.
You just went out again. You can't hear, we can't hear you, Captain Wright. We, we heard you said thank you, but thank you from all of us. We appreciate.
Yeah. Zoom's a great thing, but sometimes those technical difficulties that we run into. So, um, also with our fire department, he's not able to be on. He's, um, doing some, uh, drill with his military unit. It's Captain Jeff Frazier. He also had his 15-year, um, service anniversary, but he's actually away, uh, out of town at drill. So, um, we have with our finance department, um, our payroll coordinator, Alisa Lockhart, with, uh, five years of service. And, um, congratulations, Alisa. Uh, seems like it's flown by.
I know.
So if you'd like to say a few words, you're more than welcome to.
Um, I just want to thank, uh, the city for the opportunity to have the employment and being at service for the past five years.
Thank you so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Alisa. With our Parks and Recreation Department, we have Harold Brooks with five years of service. So I see him on here. Congratulations. He goes by, he goes by Bernard. Congratulations Bernard.
Thank you. I appreciate you, uh, just being here five years, uh, as well. And working in the Parks and Rec Department and, uh, a lot of skills that I didn't know before I started, I learned them now. So thank you for allowing me to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
With our utilities department, um, and I believe they're on your, uh, computer, Mr. Woody. We have, uh, John Thomas, who, um, has his 15, or who had his 15 years back in February. Uh, congratulations, John. If you'd like to say a few words, we welcome you to do so.
Yes, thank you very much. I'd like to thank the mayor and I'd say, uh, city manager. And I'd like to thank, uh, especially my best thing to, uh, Mr. Smith that passed away, my friend, Mr. Smith. He was a good man, you know? And then, uh, and I keep on continuing to work here, make many more years than I can make, you know? And I thank everybody, you know? Thank God I made it for being able to see the city fair, city, you know? And keep on, and keep going for going, 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 you know? Do what I told you to do and just keep it up. I think more than I can say, you know? And I thank God above will let me be here all the time, you know? And pound to make a million more, five more year to be here, you know? And I thank everybody that I work with, you know? And just keep on the good way, longer I can stay.
Thank you. Thank you, John. And you halfway there.
Oh, yeah.
13 more. So you down here now. You can suck it up now. Like the tunnel, like said, the tunnel, the haze in the barn. So it's down here for you, but just keep that attitude and we certainly appreciate it. Thank you so much.
I appreciate you, man. Thank you.
Thank you very much, John.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right. Also with our utilities department, Denoris Williams, uh, had his 15-year employment anniversary last month. So congratulations, Denoris. If you'd like to say a few words, we welcome you to do so.
Yes, um, thank you very much. Um, I appreciate all of the hard work that y'all do for the city and making it a better place, uh, for the citizens and the workforce. Um, so I learned a lot from, um, different people over the years and different departments. So I thank you for the opportunity very much and hopefully I can do another 15.
Oh, yeah. It's down here for you. You can suck it up now. Like I told you, the haze in the barn for you. Thank you very much, Denoris. We appreciate you so much.
Thank you, Denoris.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
We had several from the police department. Um, they weren't able to be on. A lot of them actually got off duty early this morning. So, uh, went home and, and went to bed. And so, um, we do want to just, uh, mention their names. We have Officer John Buchanan, five years of service. Corporal Roderick Johnson, five years of service. Officer Eason Duke with five years of service. Patricia Gamble, who's a dispatcher, uh, five years of service. And then, uh, Lieutenant Stevens Zedanowicz with 15 years of service. So, uh, we just want to thank them as well for everything that they do for our community.
Thank you. Uh, thanks to all of them. And thank you, Stephanie, for, uh, making this a highlight for them. Because again, we can't say thank you enough. We appreciate. Thank you so much.
Yeah, Mayor, on yesterday, we realized that Stephanie stated yesterday is 120 years from the, uh, I believe about 12 employees. 120 years, a lot of experience right there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Day. Uh, proceeding on council at this time, uh, I'd like to call on a clerk for the reading of, we do have three proclamation that would be read. Of course, you will do those individually and we are recognizing, uh, Glenwood Stu, uh, for having a very, very good season and three of their sports, which cheerleading years of sports as well as volleyball and as well as the girls' basketball team. So with that, I'd like to call on Melanie Lee, uh, clerk, uh, for the reading of these proclamation. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas on February the 17th, 2021, Glenwood Girls Basketball Team brought home the AISAAAA state championship title. And whereas the Glenwood Girls Basketball Team ended the season with a winning record of 23 to one by winning the Elite Eight against Fort Dale, Final Four against Tuscaloosa Academy, and securing the championship with a 40-27 win over Clark Prep. And whereas after several months of dedication, teamwork, playing during pandemic, a very talented basketball team, under the leadership of head coach Dusty Purdue, assistant coach Elizabeth Purdue, and assistant coach Kathy Craw, won Glenwood's eighth state championship. The last state championship win was in 2017. And whereas the team members of the 2020, 2021 Glenwood Girls Basketball Team are senior members Maya Brooks, Peyton Corbett, Macy Fanning, Leah King, Jamarra McDowell. Juniors Caitlin Blackshear, Jasmine Burts, Ariana Pender. Sophomore Emma Head. Freshman Anna Grace Griggs, Kalen Obert, Olivia Slocum, Lily Wirt. Manager May Durnum. Whereas Peyton Corbett, Macy Fanning, and Jasmine Burts made the Alabama Independent School Association All-Tournament Team. And whereas the state title win was a team effort with everyone on the roster contributing in one way or another. These team members serve as role models to all youth. The dedication of the team to practice teamwork, high goals, hard work, and mental attitudes serves as an example to all students in every school. Now therefore, I, Eddie Enlow, as Mayor of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021 as a day to honor Glenwood Girls Basketball Team 2020-2021 AISAAAA state champions in Phoenix City.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Is Coach Purdue out there?
Uh, no, sir, Mayor. I, I don't see Coach Purdue.
Well, again, on behalf of the council and myself, we do, uh, like to say, uh, congratulations, uh, for winning the state championship. That's not an easy task. Uh, it does take teamwork. It takes a lot of selfishness. So again, congratulations to Glenwood Girls Basketball Team. And, uh, we will make sure they get this proclamation. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Um, this is the Glenwood Varsity Cheerleaders. Whereas the Glenwood Cheerleaders promote school spirit, leadership, sportsmanship, and encourage all teams and individuals to make a commitment to excellence. And whereas on November the 7th, 2020, Glenwood Varsity Cheerleading Squad competed in the Alabama Independent School Association Cheerleading Competition and are now the Large Varsity Division Champions. And whereas Coach Mandy Hutchison is to be commended for her guidance, support, and teaching skills. Coach Hutchison has coached at Glenwood for six years. And in the past three years, the Glenwood Varsity Cheerleaders were named Camp Champs in 2018 and State Champions in 2019 and 2020. And whereas members of the Varsity Cheer Squad for 2020-2021 are Harrison Smith, Caroline Wash, Mary Frances Lurker, Emily Ivy, Brinkley Wade, Addison Powers, Catherine Bader, Riley Curtis, Morgan Jackson, Crystal Ingram, Reagan Rutledge, Meg Rosier, Alexis Williams, Madison Sports, Maddie Cardon, Sarah Elizabeth Ellison. And whereas the endless hours of practice, dedication, and perseverance have allowed the Varsity Cheerleaders to achieve the highest honors out of so many teams in their division. Now therefore, I, Eddie Enlow, as Mayor of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021 as a day to honor Glenwood Varsity Cheerleaders 2020 AISAA state champions, Large Varsity Division in Phoenix City.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Is Coach Hutchinson out there? Okay. If not, again, on behalf of the council and myself, we, we certainly like to congratulate them, uh, for being, uh, state champion and cheerleader, which is a sport. So again, we will make sure that they do receive their proclamation. But again, on behalf of the council, we would like to say congratulations and thank them for representing Phoenix City. Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Um, this proclamation is for the Glenwood Volleyball Team. Whereas on October the 29th, 2020, Glenwood Volleyball Team earned the 2020 AISAAAA state volleyball championship title. And whereas the Glenwood Volleyball Team ended the season with a winning record of 15 to three, with winning conference games against Morgan Academy 3 to 2, Megan East, Macon East Academy 3 to 1, and securing the championship with a 3 to 2 win over Southern Academy. And whereas after several months of dedication, teamwork, playing during pandemic, a very talented volleyball team, under the leadership of head coach Kayla Strength, and with support of the team manager Charlie Carpenter, won Glenwood's first volleyball state championship. And whereas the team members of the Glenwood Volleyball Team are Ashlyn David, Simone Gillespie, Katie Jones, Ansley Patterson, Gracie Scher, Taylor Dawson, Anna Grace Griggs, Leah King, Ariana Pender, Taylor Shelton, May Durnum, Gracie Harris, Isabel Crick, Laney Riviera, Olivia Slocum, Presley Giglio, Macy Humphrey, Josie Miller, Trinity Sales, Abby Torres. And whereas the state title win was a team effort with everyone on the roster contributing in one way or another. These team members serve as role models to all youth. The dedication of the team to practice teamwork, high goals, hard work, and mental attitudes serves an example to all students in every school. Now therefore, I, Eddie Enlow, as Mayor of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021 as a day to honor the Glenwood Volleyball Team 2020 AISAAAA state champions in Phoenix City.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Uh, uh, again, uh, from this council and myself, we would certainly like to congratulate the volleyball team of Glenwood for winning the state championship and to Coach Strength for being able to guide and build your team to, to be the state champion. So we are certainly proud of that. And on behalf of this council, again, we certainly congratulate you all. Also, I was just notified that Coach Purdue is on the call. So Coach Purdue, are you out there?
I'm letting him on, Mayor.
Beg your pardon, Mike?
I'm, I'm letting him on.
Okay. Coach Purdue, are you there? Is he on, Mike?
Uh, yes, sir. He is on, but he's muted. I just asked him to, to unmute.
Coach Purdue, can you hear us? Can you hear me? Mike?
I guess he's, I sent him a request to, to unmute and start the video, but maybe he's not able to.
Okay. Are you there, Coach Purdue? Okay, just kind of let us know, Mike, and if we can, we can get him in, uh, but we're about to go ahead and start on the agenda. So if, if there's an appropriate time, we, we would certainly, uh, give him an opportunity. So council proceeding on, uh, with the city clerk. At this time, council, I'd like to call for motion for the approval of the, uh, February the 16th work session as well as February the 17th council meeting. And since we were all there, I would like to ask that the council, if it's your pleasure, that we take this in one vote again for the February the 16th work session as well as, uh, February the 17th council meeting. May I have a motion to approve, council?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Day. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Second, Mr. Gordon. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on now, council, uh, on the city council, uh, there any unfinished business out? All right, there not being any, we will proceed with the resolutions, uh, and on administration. First one we have is a resolution in reference to granting an easement to Alabama Power Company to provide electrical services for the Liberty Hill Development. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas Alabama Power Company requires easements on City of Phoenix City property to provide electrical service for the Liberty Hill Development. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize the mayor and city manager to sign the necessary documents to authorize the granting of said easements, passed, approved, and adopted the second day of March, 2021.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lee. Council, we've heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Gordon. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Johnson. Comments or discussion? Okay?
Uh, yeah, Mayor, uh, I'd like to say this, uh, about the Liberty Hill Baptist Church. I know they've been working on the project and I'm glad to see them.
Not the church, not Liberty Hill Baptist Church. It's Liberty Hill Development.
Oh, I'm sorry. Liberty, Liberty Hill Development. I know they've been working on this project for a long time and a congratulations to them to move forward on this, on, on this project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any others? If not, at this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on council on administration, on the building department. We have a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor and city manager to enter into a 36-month lease agreement with Best Copy Products Incorporated for One Sharp MX dash 37 and 1 network digital cop, color copier in the amount of $110.16 per month. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City Building Department needs to replace the current copier system. And whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, received a proposal from Best Copy Products Incorporated for One Sharp MX 3071 network digital color copier for a monthly rental fee of $110.16 plus taxes, plus .0079 cents per black and white copies and .045 cents per color copy per the State of Alabama contract number 140603-al06 for a term of 36 months for a total payout of $3,965.76. And whereas the city finds the lease to be a necessity for the day-to-day operations of city business. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, authorizes the mayor and city manager to enter into a lease agreement with Best Copy Products Incorporated to lease One Sharp MX 3071 network digital color copier, passed, approved, and adopted the second day of March, 2021.
Okay, council, we've heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, uh, may I have a motion for approval, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, that's motion, Mr. Day, and that's the second, uh, Ms. Johnson?
Yes, uh-huh, thank you.
So we have the motion and the second. Any comments or discussion? Okay. Call for the vote, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now council proceeding on on the city clerk's department. We have a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor and the city manager to enter into a 36-month lease agreement with Best Copy Products Incorporated for One Sharp MX dash 5071 network digital color copier in the amount of $208.80 per month. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City City Clerk's Department needs to replace the current copier system. And whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, received a proposal from Best Copy Products Incorporated for One Sharp MX 5071 networked digital color copier for a monthly rental fee of $208.80 plus taxes, plus .0054 cents per black and white copies and .04 cents per color copy per the State of Alabama contract number 140603-al06 for a term of 36 months for a total payout of $7,516.80. And whereas the city finds the lease to be a necessity for the day-to-day operations of city business. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, authorizes the mayor and city manager to enter into a lease agreement with Best Copy Products Incorporated to lease One Sharp MX 5071 networked digital color copier, passed, approved, and adopted the second day of March, 2021.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Uh, council, we've all heard the resolution, the reading of the resolution. Uh, may I have a motion for approval, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Gordon. May I have a second, council?
Second, Mayor.
Okay. And we do have a second by Councilwoman Johnson. Any comments or discussion, council? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, uh, council and, uh, thank you, Mrs. Lee. Proceeding on on the engineering department. We have a resolution in reference to authorizing and directing. We have a resolution in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor and the city manager. To accept a proposal from Stone and Sons Electrical Contractors Incorporated. To repair traffic signals located at the intersection of South Railroad Street. And Lakewood Drive in an amount not to exceed thirty-one thousand dollars. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City Engineering and Public Works Department. Has determined that the traffic signal located at the intersection of South Railroad Street and Lakewood Drive is in need of repair. And whereas Stone and Sons Electrical Contractors Incorporated. Has provided a proposal to perform the work in an amount not to exceed thirty-one thousand dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama does hereby authorize the mayor and city manager to accept a proposal. From Stone and Sons Electrical Contractors Incorporated. To perform the above described work in an amount not to exceed thirty-one thousand dollars. Passed, approved and adopted the second day of March, twenty twenty one.
Okay, council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordon. Council, any comments or discussion? Okay, if not. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And also council proceeding on the engineering department. We have a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor and the city manager. To enter into a thirty-six month lease agreement with Best Copy Products Incorporated. For One Sharp MX dash five zero seven one networked digital color. Copier in the amount of a hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-two cents. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City Engineering Department needs to replace the current copier system. And whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama received a proposal from Best Copy Products Incorporated. For One Sharp MX five zero seven one networked digital color copier. For a monthly rental fee of one eight, one hundred eighty-four dollars, sixty-two cent. Plus any local taxes, plus point zero zero five four cents per black and white copies. And point zero four cents per color copy per State of Alabama contract number. One four zero six zero three dash AL zero six. For a term of thirty-six months for a total payout of six thousand six hundred forty-six dollars, thirty-two cent. And whereas the city finds the lease to be a necessity for the day-to-day operations of city business. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama. Authorizes the mayor and city manager to enter into a lease agreement with Best Copy Products Incorporated. To lease One Sharp MX five zero seven one networked digital color copier. Passed, approved and adopted the second day of March, twenty twenty one.
Thank you, uh, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Council, we've all heard the resolution, the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, uh, to approve. May I have a motion, council?
Motion to approve.
All right, uh, motion, Councilman Day, and second, Councilwoman Johnson?
Okay. That's fine.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now council proceeding on on the fire department. We have a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor and the city manager to enter into a thirty-six month lease agreement with Best Copy Products Incorporated. For One Sharp MX thirty-seven and one networked digital color copier in the amount of a hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety-four cents. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City Fire Rescue needs to replace the current copier system. And whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama received a proposal from Best Copy Products Incorporated. For One Sharp MX three zero seven one networked digital color copier for a monthly fee of one hundred twenty-four dollars, ninety-four cent plus taxes. Plus point zero zero seven nine cents per black and white copies. And point zero four five cents per color copy per the State of Alabama contract number. One four zero six zero three dash AL zero six. For a term of thirty-six months for a total payout of four thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars, eighty-four cent. And whereas the city finds the lease to be a necessity for the day-to-day operations of city business. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama authorizes the mayor and city manager to enter into a lease agreement. With Best Copy Products Incorporated to lease One Sharp MX three zero seven one networked digital color copier. Passed, approved and adopted the second day of March, twenty twenty one.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Council, we've heard the resolution. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Motion to approve.
Motion, Councilman Gordon, may I have a second? May I have a second, council?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Johnson. We have the motion and the second. Council, are there any comments or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, council on the golf course department. We have a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor and the city manager to enter into a lease purchase agreement, lease number. One one eight one five four seven dash one. With PNC Equipment Finance LLC for a sixty-month, one-dollar buyout lease. At six thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-three cents per month. For a total payout of three hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred fifty-three dollars and eighty cents. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City desires to enter into a lease purchase agreement with PNC Equipment Finance LLC. For the lease of golf course maintenance equipment for the Lakewood Golf Course. And whereas the city council has reviewed said lease purchase agreements submitted by PNC Equipment Finance LLC. For a sixty-month, one-dollar buyout lease at six thousand one hundred fourteen dollars, twenty-three cent per month. For a total payout of three hundred sixty-six thousand, eight hundred fifty-three dollars, eighty cent. And whereas the city council finds the lease to be a necessity for the day-to-day operations of the Lakewood Golf Course. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama authorizes and directs. The mayor and city manager to sign and enter into such lease purchase agreement. Lease number one one eight one five four seven dash one. With PNC Equipment Finance LLC for a sixty-month, one-dollar buyout lease at six thousand one hundred fourteen dollars, twenty-three cent per month. For a total payout of three hundred sixty-six thousand, eight hundred fifty-three dollars, eighty cent. Passed, approved and adopted the second day of March, twenty twenty one.
Okay, council, all of us have heard the reading of the resolution. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, uh, then a motion, uh, Councilman Day and a second, uh, Councilman Gordon?
That's, that works, yep.
Okay, we have the motion and second. Council, are there any comments, discussion? Okay, if not, call for the vote, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now council proceeding on on the human resources department. We have a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor and the city manager to enter into a thirty-six month lease agreement. With Best Buy Products Incorporated. For One Sharp MX dash five zero seven one networked digital color. Copier in the amount of a hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-two cents per month. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City Human Resources Department needs to replace the current copier system. And whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama received a proposal from Best Copy Products Incorporated. For One Sharp MX five zero seven one networked digital color copier for a monthly rental fee. Of one hundred eighty-four dollars, sixty-two cent plus taxes. Plus point zero zero five four cents per black and white copies. And point zero four cent per color copy per State of Alabama contract number one four zero six zero three. Dash AL zero six for a term of thirty-six months for a total payout of six thousand six hundred forty-six dollars, thirty-two cent. And whereas the city finds the lease to be a necesses- to be a necessity for the day-to-day operations of city business. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama authorizes the mayor and city manager. To enter into a lease agreement with Best Copy Products Incorporated. To lease One Sharp MX five zero seven one networked digital color copier. Passed, approved and adopted the second day of March, twenty twenty one.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Lee.
Yes.
Each of us have heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for approval. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Motion to approve.
Motion. Gordon? Motion, Councilman Gordon, and that's the second, uh, Mr. Day?
There's Ms. Johnson.
Ms. Johnson?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Motion by Councilman Gordon and and second by Councilwoman, uh, Johnson. Okay? Any comments or discussion? Council?
Mayor, may I just add just a brief comment? I think we're halfway through a lot of resolutions, and I think what we're doing now is just time for renewals. Of our different, uh, renewal of leases, uh, for digital copiers. And, uh, we've been partnering, um, with the same company. We getting discounts and saving the city money. Is that correct? Is this that time do these leases?
Yes, it, that that is correct. Uh, all of the ones that, uh. We have approved thus far, we've been able to save, uh, some money per year. On the, uh, monthly, uh, payment. The only one that went up slightly. Uh, and it was just a few cents is, uh, the one that we are just acting on right now, uh, for the, uh, human resource support. But yes, in 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 because of the state contract, that does help us to, uh, get a little lower price. So we are great.
Okay. I like that. I like to ask the question as well. Um, I know in the, uh. Clerk office, if anybody need a copy or something like that, we charge, uh, a s- a certain amount. Uh, for a copy, a, you know, for one copy or two copy. I don't know whether the other department do the same thing. Um, can somebody answer that for me?
Mr. Hunt, uh, can't hear you. Take it off me, Mr. Hunt. Okay?
That falls under record requests, Mr. Day. They handle that differently as well as you going to a records at the clerk's office or you going to the records at the police department. It depends on or human resources. So yes, sir, something is in place for the different departments.
But the human resource department, police department and the clerk office.
Any any records that a person wants to want to pick up and records is in place.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Day. Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Any other comments or discussion? If not, like to call for the vote, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on council on the IT department. The first one is a resolution in reference to declaring various items as surplus to be sold as scrap or be disposed of at the city landfill. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Information Technology Department of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama. Has items of personal property which are no longer needed for public or municipal purposes. And whereas section eleven forty-three fifty-six of the Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five as amended. Authorizes the municipal governing body to dispose of unneeded personal property. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama. That the described property is listed on the attachment entitled Exhibit A. Is hereby declared surplus to be sold as scrap or to be disposed of at the city landfill. Passed, approved and adopted the second day of March, twenty twenty one.
Okay, council, we've heard a, uh, resolution. Uh, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Motion, Councilman Day, and that's the second, Councilman Gordon? Is that?
Yes.
Okay, so we have the motion and the second. At this time, council, are there any comments or discussion?
Uh, I guess it's, I don't know what a silly question, but anyway. Those computer item and those stuff that have information on it. It is cleared up all the information before you go to the landfill. I'm sure of that. Is that right, uh, IT department?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Day, that's correct. The city has a, um, hard drive destruct- uh, destruction policy. So before any computers get disposed of, we remove the hard drives.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
That was a, that's a good statement, and. The hard drive, is it kept, um, for a compliance of number of years just to kind of for backup information or anything? How?
Yes, ma'am. We do keep the hard drives for for a certain period of time, and then. We actually, we take them apart and remove the platters out of them. That's what the the data stored on the platter. And then once we get so many platters, we, um. We actually have those destroyed, but we recycle the case of the hard drive.
Okay. Thank you.
Since we are talking about that, I'd like to ask another question to the clerk office and Mr. Hunt, if I can answer this. Uh, I know all those record that we started this program, uh, a while back, all those old records that we have in the City of Phoenix City. Uh, they're being put on a hard drive or for storage. Cause I remember a long time ago, we did not have our water sprinkler. I had the opportunity to. The old area in the, uh, in the City Clerk Office, and we had records there, you know, from way back, and I was just. I just thought about it. They're being put on a hard drive to, uh, preserve as well?
Um, as far as the city clerk's office go, several years ago, um, back when Charlotte was city clerk, we, um, took all the records and had them put into Adobe and stored on computer servers.
Oh, okay, okay. I just wanted to thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments or discussion? Okay, at this time, council, I'd like to call for the vote, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, council proceeding on the IT department. Is that we have a resolution in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor and the city manager. To enter into a master service agreement with payment, payments. Am I saying that correctly, Mike? Paymentis Corporation for Interactive Lab Voice Response IVR Payment Processing Services. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama is committed to providing. Convenient customer service and efficient customer service options. For the community and multi-channel services available via walk-in telephone and internet, which are all. Important components of a comprehensive customer service improvement initiative. And whereas on December the seventeenth, twenty twenty, the city manager directed information technology staff. To research pay-by-phone interactive voice response IVR. Payment processing services with a user convenience fee pricing model. And whereas the City of Phoenix City evaluated three service providers and found Paymentis Corporation. To be the most qualified firm to provide the required services to our customers. And provide a real-time integrated platform with our Tyler Technologies Munis ERP software. And whereas the services would be provided to city customers at no cost to the City of Phoenix City. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the mayor and city manager. Are hereby authorized and directed to execute a master services agreement. With Paymentis Corporation for Interactive Voice Response IVR Payment Processing Services. Passed, approved and adopted the second day of March, twenty twenty one.
Okay, thank you. Uh, council, we've all heard the resolution. I'd like to ask for a motion for approval, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Day. Was that a second by Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, we have the motion and the second, Mrs. Lee. Council, at this time, are there any comments or questions?
Uh, yes, uh, Mayor, uh, you know, on yesterday, uh, uh, Ms., uh, Mike elaborate on this. But I would like for him to, uh, risk to be redone it here. We all heard the resolution as you stated. But I would like for someone or him to elaborate for our citizens if we on cable TV. Elaborate for our citizens here, cause this is a very good program here.
Yes, sir, Mr. Day. Um, this just, this just provides another, uh, payment option to our, to our utilities customers. And it allows our, our customers, um, our customers can currently pay over the phone. But they have to speak to a live agent. This will allow them to pay through over the phone, uh, using an automated system, which will free up our staff. To work on other things, and this is at no cost to the city.
And that's great, right there. That's great. Able to free up our staff. That's, that's great. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
May I add just one other comment? Um, yeah, this is going to be one of those things. May I add just one other comment? Um, yeah, this is going to be one of those things that our citizen really, um, would, would, this is one of those nice to have features, you know, when they can pay by phone, they can pay in person, they can pay. Do we get the kiosk down there? I, I can't recall.
The kiosk is in the works, but it hasn't been completed yet.
It hasn't been completed, but that would be another option. And of course, you know, um, through the drive-through and by mail. And now the, um, the, uh, interactive voice response unit in real time, that means that those payment will post, um, you know, before five o'clock or at the time that they make the payment. So there's not a, a, a lengthy waiting time. You know, cause some companies, when you make the payment, you know, um, it could take, you know, two and three days for it to post. But this is real time, right? And it'll post immediately?
Uh, yes, ma'am. That's, that is correct. Um, it, it will, uh, integrate with our Tyler Technologies, our munis system. And, um, the kiosk and the, and the IVR will be real time.
That's, that's wonderful. That is great. Supplying many options to pay your bill. I mean, that's, that's just, uh, that's awesome for our community, for our city. And wh- when should we, uh, expect this here to really be full, fully in place?
This, um, this should be, we should be able to get this in place within thirty days.
Awesome. That's great. Citizen would love it. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. At this time, counsel, I'd like to call for the vote, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, uh, counsel on the library department. We have a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor and the city manager to enter into a thirty-six month lease agreement with Best Copy Products Incorporated for One Sharp MX dash five zero seven one network digital color copier in an amount of a hundred and eighty-four dollars and three cents per month. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Phoenix City, Russell County Library, needs to replace the current copier system. Whereas the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, received a proposal from Best Copy Products Incorporated for One Sharp MX five zero seven one network digital color copier for a monthly fee of one hundred and eighty-four dollars, three cent plus taxes, plus point zero zero five four cents per black and white copies and point zero four cents per color copy per state of Alabama contract number one four zero zero six zero three dash AL zero six for a term of thirty-six months for a total payout of six thousand, six hundred, twenty-five dollars, eight cent. And whereas the city finds the lease to be a necessity for the day-to-day operations of city business. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council, the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, authorizes the mayor and city manager to enter into a lease agreement with Best Copy Products Incorporated to lease One Sharp MX five zero seven one networked digital color copier. Past proven and adopted the second day of March, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you, uh, so much, Mrs. Lee. Counsel, we've all heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for approval. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordon. Any comments or discussion?
Uh, yes, uh, Mayor, uh, Mr. Hunter, I think you elaborated on this a while back. You know, it's the Phoenix City, Russell County Library. Uh, I guess the question I'm asking, do, uh, Russell County play any part in? And, uh, helping us share the cost of the library. I know it's for the entire community, uh, actually entire county, really.
Uh, you on mute, Mr. Hunter? I'll mute yourself.
As I told, as I told you all before, it's, 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 it's been, we've gone over this several times. It's a small fraction that they participate with as far as costs, but we don't worry about that. We just move on and take care of the citizens. You know, that's something we've gone over several times. And it's still the same as far as the participation. So we don't too much worry about that. We just move forward.
Uh, I know you mentioned that a while back. Has we, uh, lately, uh, uh, contacted them by increasing their, uh, participation for its finance?
No, sir, Mr. Day. I surely hadn't. Um, like I say, it's good to have participants and it's a fraction that we take care of down there, but whether Russell County participates or not, it's not gonna affect what we do for the citizens.
I know.
Phoenix City and Russell County. And you know, you know, you've been on the crusade about getting along. So we still got several lawsuits that we're involved in with Russell County. So I just don't wanna rock the boat.
Okay.
People understand what situation we're in right now. So we just, you know, move forward and, and not worry. It hadn't hindered us in any kind of, any kind of manner, any kind of way. So they do the best job they can down at the library to make sure things are going good there. But it's not, it's, it's, it's got so many other things to do right now. That's just not something that I want to get involved in.
Well, you know why I asked that question? Because things have changed down in the street. Definitely ask that question. All right. Thank you, Mr. Hunter.
They, they haven't changed that fast. Oh, no, sir. They, they still trying to get some things together down there. So, and, uh, I hope the best for them.
Yes, I do too. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Alas. Uh, any other comments or discussion? Okay. Call for the vote, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, counsel on the utilities department. We have a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor and city manager turn into a thirty-six month lease agreement with Best Copy Products Incorporated for One Sharp MX dash five zero seven one networked digital color copier in an amount of a hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-one cents per month. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Phoenix City Utilities Department needs to replace the current copier system. And whereas the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, received a proposal from Best Copy Products Incorporated for One Sharp MX five zero seven one networked digital color copier for a monthly rental fee of one hundred and ninety-six dollars, thirty-one cent plus taxes, plus point zero zero five four cents per black and white copies and point zero four cent per color copy for the state of Alabama contract number one four zero six zero three dash AL zero six for a term of thirty-six months for a total payout of seven thousand, sixty-seven dollars, sixteen cent. And whereas the city finds the lease to be a necessity for the day-to-day operations of city business. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council, the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, authorizes the mayor and city manager to enter into a lease agreement with Best Copy Products Incorporated to lease One Sharp MX five zero seven one networked digital color copier. Past proven and adopted the second day of March, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Lee. Counsel, we've all heard the reading of this resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for approval. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Councilwoman Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordon. Counsel, are there any comments or discussion? Okay, there not being any, uh, like to call for the vote, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, counsel is on the ordinance. There's a public notice in first reading. We have a letter of recommendation from the planning commission, public notice and ordinance to rezone zero point three four acre of land located at fifty-two oh two Semerby Road from an A-one zone, which is a low density residential district and general agricultural district to a C-three zone neighborhood and commercial district. David Alexander Quinney, Quinney is the owner. At this time, counsel, I'd like to call upon the clerk to, for the reading of the first reading, uh, for the, the reading of the letter for the, uh, public notes announcement as well as the, uh, the ordinance. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Um, the letter is from the planning commission dated February the twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one to the mayor and city council members, uh, regarding the rezon point three four acres, uh, at fifty-two oh two Semerby Road, David Quinney, David Alexander Quinney owner. The planning commission of the city of Phoenix City met on Tuesday, February the twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one to consider the request of David Alexander Quinney for point three four acres located at fifty-two oh two Semerby Road from an A-one zone, low density residential district and general agricultural district to a C-three zone neighborhood commercial district. It is the recommendation of the planning commission that this request for rezon be approved by the city council. Um, this letter is signed by Pat Howard, the chairman, and Eliza Phillips, secretary. The public notice and ordinance reads as follows. Notice is hereby given that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, in response to requests made by the planning commission of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, will meet on the sixth day of April, two thousand and twenty-one at nine AM Eastern Standard Time at the Martin Adalauer Community Center located at thirty-seven forty-three Moon Lake Drive, Phoenix City, Alabama, or by platform Zoom to consider the following amendment to the zoning ordinance of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, and ordinance, and ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Phoenix City, section one, that the zoning ordinance of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, adopted on the seventeenth day of September, two thousand and two, be amended so that the following tract of land be located in a C-three zone neighborhood commercial district instead of an A-one zone, low density residential district and general agricultural district. Property is located at fifty-two oh two Semerby Road, David Quinney, David Alexander Quinney owner. Legal description follows. At said meeting, all persons desired to be heard concerning the rezoning of the above described property may appear before council the aforementioned time and place to be heard. Past proven and adopted the second day of March, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lee.
Yes.
Counsel, we've heard the reading of the, uh, the first reading as well as the public notice and the, also the ordinance. So counsel, with that, at this time, I'd like, like to ask for a motion for the approval to accept the letter as well as approve the public notice and as well as place the ordinance on first reading. So with that, like to have a motion for approval.
Off motion for all three, Mayor, at this time.
Okay, Councilman Day, have a motion. We have a motion. Counsel, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordon. Any comments or discussion? If not, at this time, I'd like to call for the vote, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, counsel, we have a board appointment. It is the Historic Preservation Commission. Uh, we do have two openings. However, at this time, I would like to call for a motion to table for the reason of our process for the public is our process is person that are currently serving, we always like to reach out to them to see if, would they like to continue to serve. And our clerk has been able to get in contact with one person that has agreed to, uh, serve again, but has not been able to, uh, make contact with the other person. So we do want to give that person the benefit of the doubt that we will try, the clerk will try, uh, within the next two weeks to reach that person. And at that time, we'll make a decision. If we do not reach that person, what we will have to do as a council is turn in names. Uh, and that process is we don't talk to the person, we turn in the names and let the clerk, uh, uh, make contact with them. So with that all said, at this time, counsel, I'd like to call for a motion that, uh, this be tabled.
Motion to table.
So we have a motion by Councilman Gordon. May I have a second?
Second.
Was that you, Mr. Day?
Yes.
I couldn't, heard a little static. I couldn't tell whether it was you or Councilwoman Johnson. So we have the motion and the second. Uh, Mrs. Lee, so counsel, at this time, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the tape. We have a motion. We have a motion. Okay, like to call for the vote, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, counsel, we'd like to turn it over to our city attorney, Jimmy Graham. Mr. Graham?
Good morning, Mayor and Counsel.
Good morning.
Morning, sir.
Um, we have three claims on the agenda today. Uh, the first one is, uh, a claim filed by State Farm ASO Latonya Miller. Uh, this is where an accident occurred on Highway two eighty-four thirty-one where one of our police officers was working on an accident, left his car out of gear and the traffic coming by pushed our, uh, police car into, uh, Ms. Miller's car. Um, accident reports enclosed. The, the problem with this is, is this, um, they didn't submit. State Farm didn't, three estimates is, is our policy requires. Uh, based on that, I'm going to recommend denying this claim. And I will contact them and see if they can get us two more. If they don't, then, you know, we'll just have to let them do what they wanna do.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Graham. Counsel, we've heard the recommendation from my attorney. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve, uh, his recommendation. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Motion, Councilman Gordon, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman John. Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one is a claim filed by the Vince Law Firm on behalf of Barbara Port. Uh, Ms. Port alleges that she was ser- received personal injuries. Um, we had a, an easement through her yard, um, the corrugated pipe that was originally installed and rusted out. Um, and caused sinkholes. She claimed that she fell into a sinkhole. Um, hurting her left leg, uh, hip and body. Um, there are no estimates that were submitted. Everything says to be determined, uh, later. Um, I'm going to ask if y'all would to table this claim until the next meeting and let me contact the Vince Law Firm and see if we can't get some idea of, um, what her injuries actually are, uh, that she claims. And, um, see if we can resolve it. If not, then, um, we'll come back next time and I'll make a, another recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Counsel, we've heard the attorney's, uh, uh, recommendation. Uh, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for that approval of his recommendation. May I have a motion, counsel?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Day. Was that a second, Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes, sir.
All right, we have motion in the second. Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Graham?
Mayor and Counsel, the, the next one, uh, is filed by Greg Davis Law out of Montgomery, Alabama, on behalf of Dennis Andrews. Um, this is another, y'all had, uh, followed my recommendation uh, for me to try to negotiate a settlement. As I told you last night, uh, it, on the, at the work session, we've had a hard time getting in touch with Mr. Davis. However, yesterday, just before the meeting started, uh, a Nick Palarini, an attorney from Auburn, texted me and, uh, wanted to know what we could do to resolve this. Um, I tried to call him yesterday after the work session. He had already left his office. I'm gonna call him again when we get off today. Um, I'm going to ask that y'all, uh, table this um, claim also until next meeting where I can come back and make a, a recommendation as to whether we're gonna be able to settle it or not. um claim also until next meeting where I can come back and make a, a recommendation as to whether we're gonna be able to settle it or not.
Okay.
All right.
Counsel, we've heard uh our attorney's recommendation. Uh, may I have a motion to approve that recommendation, please?
Motion to approve.
Motion, Councilman Gordy, may I have a second? May I have a second, counsel?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have the motion in the second. Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Lo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Graham.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thanks to the council. Uh, certainly like to thank our employees of the city, uh, the ones that are on the Zoom, uh, department head, as well as the one that are out in the field at this time. We certainly like to thank them, uh, certainly appreciate what they do, which is, we've always stated, that's how big as I said it. That's why we try to give them honor when honors due. So with that, uh-
Mayor, if you will, I, I received a text from Coach Purdue during the meeting and he wanted to express his apologies. He was having technical difficulties this morning at school. And he wanted to express his um gratitude that the council would recognize uh him and his accomplishments for the team. And I just, anyway, just wanted to hit, he just wanted to make sure y'all were, knew that they were, they were grateful for the recognition and appreciate the support.
Okay, well, let him know we certainly uh uh appreciate them of what they've done. And uh we certainly wanna give honor when honors due. So let him know we appreciate that and we do understand at times with technical difficulties, things can happen. But we certainly appreciate it. So with that said, uh, counsel, are there any council member that has uh some words to say before I call upon the city manager?
I got one thing, mayor, if I may. Um, I would like to, uh, on behalf of the council as well, congratulate each employee. Um, that was a, a lot of years combined. I know everyone is working very hard and, and, and is very committed to doing the job they were hired to do. And I would like to just say a special congratulations to the lady gators. You know, cheer, basketball, volleyball, these are some very talented young ladies. And um they deserve this special recognition and I'm just so uh humbled to be a part of that, you know, to win a state championship title. That's a big thing and it shouldn't, you know, be taken lightly. So we congratulate um all of those um student athletes uh for their hard work. And I would just like to say to the girls, you know, uh, young ladies, I say, hold on, girls, you know, hold that line because the forces outside the gym is uh, is, is awaiting you. But you have done an outstanding thing and um my hat's off and congratulations once again to Glenwood as a whole. Uh, these girls have really, really um done something uh extraordinary uh with winning these championships and uh that's, that's a great things. I say results rules and uh continue the great work, uh, young ladies.
Okay. Anyone else? If not, Mr. Hunter, anything you wanna add or take away?
Um, thank you, mayor. Just like to say to the public that's watching us right now, that we have um a few projects is going on throughout the city, Brickyard Road project. So if you can avoid that for right now, while they are working on that, that would be good. Um, South Railroad Street, which is gonna turn out to be a beautiful road also. Um, and we did get Oak Black Road Bridge opened back up for a lot of people that don't know or they hadn't heard yet. So those things, I know people was waiting on and they are good things. Um, I guess I need to, um, you know, we was asked some questions and some things were put in place. Our utility department, the way we do things there, we have got to change, but this city had to grow. The city had to grow financially to get to a certain point where you can make these particular changes. It's different. A lot of people look at the necessities that we have to have, like water, power and gas. When you're running a public department, you know, it's scrutinized all the time when you talk about making changes, the rate changes, you know, you don't see people act a certain way or do that because they have no control over it when it comes to Alabama Power Aspire. But you can see them throughout the city making big changes, but they have to have the revenue to make those changes. And some of the things that we are putting in place and that IT and utilities to put in place for our customer base is because we have grown so much, but at the same time, we had to grow our revenue. These things don't come without a price. You're gonna pay the first price and you might get several things within that particular package that it seemed like you're not paying for, but you are paying for. So it's things and changes we have to make because we are mandated a lot by ADM and it's a lot of, I mean, costly changes that's down the road. So um the perception is one thing, but the reality is another. And we are gonna have to take a look at how we adjust things for the future to keep up and maintain for those of people who don't know the history of it. We did once on our own gas um company here. And because of a lack of maintenance and right down the street from this building, then a lot of people lost their lives. That was a tragedy some years ago. So and looking at the things that you're expected to do, you know, you can't ask people to drive a car and don't put no wheels on it sometime. It just comes down to basic things like that. And looking at what we are gonna have to do is tough decisions and we're gonna make, have to make sure that we make um the best thoughtful for the citizens that we can make, but it takes up in difference to run that utility department. But the things we have where people can make their payments and make it easier for them, it's just like, I don't know if, you know, I may come across sometime as being too direct, but people gotta think outside of their self. I was raised that way to think outside of myself. And when you start thinking and saying, well, we got all this modern technology and it's here and there, whatever. Well, what about the people who don't have that? Go around the corner and talk to Mr. Randy Wilson, the school system. And when you find out that fifty percent of the students don't have a computer in their house unless the school system is getting it for them, everybody don't have the same thing. So we have to try to make it easier and better on everybody that we can, that we can touch, reach out and touch and bring them in with the inclusiveness that we always talk about. But it's not as simple as people think it is because some of us can get on a computer and work. A lot of, I have to wait for the first of the month trying to, we try to make sure that our windows work and the calls. That's the only outing that a lot of the older people get. They like to ride and pay their bills sometime. So it's totally different. You know, we can have all the modern technology in the world. Certain people are gonna use it and certain are not, but you can't, you can't just, you, you can't forget about, the older set of people wanna do things a certain way and we can't forget about our kids that don't have the things that we are looking for. So you gotta look all around and, and I'll say this. You know, and some of the questions that's asked during the time, the public is listening is, I want them to understand, each and every last one of these department heads are doing a wonderful job. We have laws that we have to abide by. So we didn't start this city up yesterday. A lot of us been doing this for a long time. And things are in place. Regulations and procedures are in place so we don't get this city in any trouble. As far as lawsuits, we'll never stop that. That's gonna happen because people just go far into disagreements. You know, on yesterday, we talked about a few things dealing with law enforcement. And that is a tough job, even in notifying you all of what's going on in an investigation. The chief was up all night and it's some good news that you all, if you hadn't heard it al- already, that you'll be hearing about the day from some of the crimes and unlawful things that went on in Columbus and Phoenix City that they are working on. Um, another thing I wanna touch on right there, so I have the chief speak on this. You know, we're renovating a public safety building. At the same time, we ran into some old problems. And that's what, that building was mitigated years ago with asbestos and some of the piping that's throughout the building. When you start changing things up, you start finding other things. So we have a problem that we have to straighten out. This problem goes back to the late eighties into the nineties to transfer from one city manager to the next and then going to ninety-six, ninety-seven, what it just did a bit of a um mitigation with it and wrapping these things. Of course, it was safe and put that way, but now we ran into this again when we doing this building. We wanna get rid of it once and for all. I don't wanna leave this on anybody else, you know, to take care of. So it's building going through a third renovation. So we gotta take care of it. So um the chief is gonna be putting some things together and I'm gonna have him speak on what we have to do and what we will be asking for to take care of that problem. But um as far as, you know, trying to run this city and the people that's trying to do this day-to-day, it takes a lot. And like I say, it's gonna take a lot of help from the public to help solve some of these crimes. When they see something to make a phone call, you just can't rely on the police being everywhere. They can't be. They can't be everywhere. You can't be Johnny on the spot. You know, you wanna make sure your response is good, but you have to get the, receive the information before you can do that. And, and wait for the true stories to come out because all kinds of stories come out about incidents that's not true. You know, so we have to find out until we get down to the nuts and bolts of it, what's really true and what we can release at that particular time on what's happening. But um that's all I had to say right now. Let's chief finish up the rest.
Yes, sir. Uh, as the city manager spoke on, we do have uh uh a, a problem in the police department, public safety building that we're gonna have to mitigate. This is not part of the uh contract. Contract to build the new renovation or do the renovation and build a new addition does not include uh unforeseen issues like uh mitigation. Many of you know that this building was constructed nineteen sixty-four. Nineteen sixty-four asbestos was a pretty common building material. Uh, since seventy-three, that has been outlawed, uh, so they don't use it anymore. However, there's lots that was left over and in the renovation in uh nineteen eighty-nine and nineteen ninety, uh, there was some mitigation done there. Uh, so where they could mitigate, they did. Uh, but they also encapsulated, they basically floored over uh some asbestos material to keep from having to remove it. Uh, that happened again in nineteen ninety-six when the building went through the second renovation. So this, uh, as the ma- chief said, is the third renovation and the renovation that's being done is in parts of the building that has quite frankly, never been a mitigate, uh, never been renovated in the first two uh renovations. So we've got a small amount of uh new asbestos that has been uncovered. We've asked a uh company that specializes in that mitigation to come in and give us a proposal. I'll be bringing that proposal to y'all to look at. Uh, we need to move fast on it because we'll have to mitigate that before the co- uh, the contract just can move forward. This will be outside the contract. It's not included in the price of the contract that you've already seen. Uh, but the cost will be, uh, I think manageable and, and like the chief said, that we're gonna get to, this time, we'll mitigate everything that, that uh has been exposed again. And this renovation will have touched every square foot of this building, so we shouldn't have to worry about that again uh twenty-five years from now when the next councils have to uh look at renovating this building again. We're gonna keep good records and make sure that we can document that all that mitigation has been done. So it will take two weeks uh minimum to get the permitting from ADM as, as the chief said, everything that uh, when you're talking about environmental protection, we'll follow the law on that. So ADM will be uh called upon to issue us a permit. The company doing the uh, for full, our gave a proposal that we look up for going with, experts in this field. They have licensed trained technicians to mitigate that to make it safe. So we feel pretty confident that we'll be able to keep the project on schedule if uh we move quick enough. So I'll, I'll have that paperwork over to the city clerk. Hopefully by the end of day, for you guys to be able to look at and move forward on. Any questions about that?
Thank you, chief. Thank you, Mr. Hunter. So with that, uh, nothing else. We certainly uh appreciate everyone and we certainly thank everyone and let's continue to uh keep our eyes on what we are responsible to do and do it in the right manner. So I certainly appreciate each and every one of you all. Thank you all so much and we uh pray and hope that uh the rest of the day and this week and this year is, is good for all of us. Uh, but let's continue to be righteous. Thank you all. So we do at this time, uh, stand adjourned. And thanks TV Bean for bringing uh this to our public.